Good afternoon, everyone. We'll call the meeting of the Delmar College Board of Regents to order at 1:00 PM on Tuesday, November 12th. Going to call roll to establish our quorum. Regent Cruel.
Here.
Regent Kelly.
Here.
Dr. Turner.
Here.
Regent Abir.
Here.
Dr. Adami.
Here.
Regent Garza.
Here.
Regent Loeb.
Here.
Dr. Babaly.
Here.
I'm Carol Scott. We have a quorum and can conduct business. Would you all please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. Dr. Turner, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And would you please join us in reading the Delmar College Vision Statement? "Delmar College empowers our communities to achieve their dreams." Thank you very much. Delmar College is streaming our live audio and video from the official Board of Regents meetings on the college's website in real time with the exception of portions of the meeting considered as closed session by statute. We have an opportunity now for public comment. We do have one individual who has signed up for public comment. We'd like to invite Ms. Roseanne Norman to the podium. You have three minutes, Ms. Norman. Ask you to push the button so that...
The one on your left.
Perfect. Good.
Okay. You can hear me. I really am enjoying my time at Delmar. I am a returning student. I'm in Culinary Arts. But what I'm here to speak to you about are a group of community, a group in our community that are not pretty much able to enroll, and that is the mentally disabled, the people with autism, the people with mental retardation, whatever other disabilities you may have. And I had an idea. I don't know if this is the right place to address it or not. I'm a teacher and I'm a mother of a disabled child, and she's unemployable at this point. So I, my idea is a classroom that would teach this community and prepare them with some job skills, to prepare them to enter the community. She is, my daughter is currently in, going through Texas Work for Solutions, and it's taken quite a bit of time. She's been fired once already from a Burger King. I'm not quite sure why. But anyway, she just does not have the job skills, and it's hard to find anybody to, to work with her, allow me to work with her. So my idea is, as a special ed teacher, a little factory called Sensicles. I would like to produce brain nourishing snacks, popsicles, muffins, that could be produced and sold in grocery stores. So I have my recipes here. This was, I don't, I don't want to go over time. I don't know how much time I have left. But this is a, it's a recipe book, and this woman did a lot of research and found a lot of foods that nourish the brain. And she put together, she was herself educated in the Sorbonne in France, and she come up with some nice recipes. She gave me permission to use them and to freeze them and to sell them if I wanted to. So I have my, my mission statement. I have my, I have a whole lot of stuff here. And I'm now a 501(c)(3). And so therefore, I don't know if Delmar is the appropriate place to have this type of a idea. I mean, to put this to, you know, put it on boots on the ground, or if I need to pursue something else. But I just wanted to approach you all and see if this would be something that maybe could get started. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Norman. We can't respond from the dais to public comment, but we can ask one of our staff members to meet with you.
Okay.
Thank you very much for being here. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we will move on to our recognitions. And today, we have several recognitions. We're going to go ahead and go to the second, oh, we'll give you a minute. Okay, you're ready? Thank you. So Dr. Patricia Benavides Dominguez is going to do our first recognition.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Dr. Eskamia, Board of Regents. I'm thrilled to share some fantastic news with you. Delmar College has been awarded the ASN Student Choice Award for Holistic Advising, accompanied by a grant of $8,000. This recognition is a testament to our unwavering commitment to including student voices and perspectives in our holistic advising redesign efforts. A special kudos goes to Letitia Wilson, our Director of Advising Initiatives, who I will call up to the podium, whose dedication and hard work in submitting and writing this proposal, with some assistance from some other colleagues here across the campus, were instrumental in securing this award. Letitia's efforts have genuinely shed light on the innovative and inclusive advising practices we are implementing here at Delmar College. This award was presented by NAPSA, Student Affairs Administrators in Higher Education, and will be announced on the NAPSA website and other social media platforms. The grant will specifically support our initiatives to enhance the student voice and engagement. It will enable our students to connect with peers through mentoring, fostering a sense of community and belonging, which is crucial for student retention and persistence. Moreover, this grant provides an exciting opportunity for students to earn stipends, assisting them with their fiscal needs, and further enriching their educational experience. We are incredibly proud of this achievement and the positive impact it is going to have on our students and the broader DMC community. Thank you for your continued support and dedication to our mission. And now I'd like Letitia to say, end it with a few words.
Good afternoon, Regent Scott, Dr. Eskamia, and the rest of the dais. Thank you for allowing me to serve here at Delmar for almost 13 years. I'm not from Texas, but I did get here as fast as I could, from the state of Ohio, and I get to serve with my colleagues, faculty, student support staff, and all of those that serve our students. This is the second time that I've gone for this award, and so that's just a testament to what we continue to do with our students, with guided pathways, with our quality enhancement plan, and with our advising and registration student support team that we have cultivated through the direction of Jeff and also Dr. Jennifer Magua. So I want to thank you for allowing me to apply for this, and this was a group effort from faculty, from administrators, and advisors that get to be boots on the ground with the students every day. I'm so excited that we get to have the students' voice, because this was the Student Choice Award. So it wasn't administrators, it was students that chose us as the recipient of this award. So I'm honored, and I can't wait to roll up my sleeves and do the work with our students. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Wilson.
NASPAL, National Association of Student Personnel Administrators. That is the standard in student affairs and student administration, our student affairs administrators across the nation. That is the national standard, correct?
Yes.
I just, I just thought I'd add that to the board. That is, that is not, that is not something to be glossed over. That is the standard. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Dr. John Dehalcom.
Madam Chair, Board of Regents, and Dr. Eskamia. Janet Camps, Director of the Office of E-Learning, has been reappointed to the state-level Learning Technology Advisory Committee, or LTAC. LTAC advises the coordinating board regarding matters of distance and digital education and instruction. Throughout the past several years, she has co-chaired a subcommittee of the LTAC that reviewed and revised the board's Principles of Good Practice, which guides distance education for institutions across the state of Texas. Additionally, Janet served on the LTAC Subcommittee that revised the state definitions for distance education. Janet has also been a member of the Texas Digital Learning Association since 2001, in which she serves on the professional development, accessibility, and information committees. Throughout this organization, she provides cutting-edge professional development in distance and digital education to institutions throughout the state. This is a very important committee. We offer more and more online instruction throughout the state, and she's been a guiding force on this. So Ms. Camps, we know will provide valuable service on the LTAC, especially with this heightened awareness of online instruction. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Camps on this achievement.
Madam Chair, Dr. Eskamia, Regents. It's an honor to bring Delmar's voice to the coordinating board. In the, in my persona, as a member of the Learning Technology Advisory Committee, digital learning, and whether it's for online, or hybrid, or face-to-face with enhanced classes, I get to bring Delmar's voice, whether it's from faculty, students, staff. I bring that, and it's an active part of what I do at the, at the coordinating board for the Learning Technology Advisory Committee. So I am backed by an amazing staff here. Everything we do is research-based, and I'm able to take those comments that we get from faculty, plus the research that we actively search out, and then that, that informs my work at the, at the Learning Technology Advisory Board. So I thank you all. I thank my amazing and phenomenally productive staff, and I thank Dr. Eskamia, Dr. Halcom, Dean Cody Gregg, for their support as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Camps, we want to say thank you for devoting additional time. We know this is above and beyond your, your regular work week, and we, we do value the staff members and faculty members that we have that serve on these state and national boards and in these roles, because, you're right, it enhances our work, but more importantly, it makes sure that Delmar College has a voice above and beyond the college itself. And so thank you for your dedication of time.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I?
Yes.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, absolutely.
Janet, you know, Michelle Singh, who is the coordinating board, digital learning person, lives in Corpus Christi.
She does.
Okay, so you are in, you're, I just want to make sure that you're in sync with each other.
We are, we are. Yes, we do. She's the deputy commissioner of digital learning, and we, we do sometimes email or text or what have you. Yeah.
All right. Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Make those connections, absolutely. Thank you again. Just as a heads up, when we get to staff reports, we are going to move the foundation report up to the first of those staff reports, so just wanted to give staff a, a little heads up before we get there. We will now move, though, to our college president's report. Dr. Eskamia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Quickly, on October 9th, I attended virtually, albeit, the Texas Association Community College Quarterly Meeting. It was held in location, on location, at Tyler Jr. College, my former place of, of employment, and dear, dear, dear college of mine, favorite of mine, obviously. It was held on, on October 9th, and I was only able to attend virtually, but still, a lot was accomplished there as we move, as, as we prepare for the next legislative session. On October 22nd through the 26th, I, along with several of y'all, six of y'all, I think, six of the Regents who attended the ACCT Congress in Seattle, Washington, we were able to bring Brian Stone, Dr. Brian Stone, with us, who served as the Western Regional Faculty Representative, who represent, represented the faculty for that, this entire region of the country, and did phenomenally well. Did not get the ultimate prize, but the prize of being there amongst just a scant few other faculty members at, at this very prestigious conference, and, you know, recognized as such was just an absolute pleasure for us all. We had a great time with Brian. And finally, on November 7th, just this past week, we put together, I think we have a couple of pictures here that I wanted to post. Did we get those pictures? Did we? No? Did we not? That's okay. That's okay. I thought we had a couple of pictures. Anyway, well, if you've seen on social media, if you've seen the, the pictures that resulted in our first annual superintendent's symposium, which was held on Oso Creek Campus this last week, it was a phenomenal turnout of principals, assistant superintendents, and, I think, 26 superintendents, more or less, I think. Headed up by Dr. Leonard Rivera and Mr. Condado Garcia, they, along, along a, a small army of staff, put together a phenomenal, a phenomenal presentation for the superintendents and, and other instructional leaders from, I forget, how many, how many school districts were represented, Leonard?
We had about, I think, 35.
35 different school districts. Many of those are current partners, and some of them are looking to expand, expand the partnerships with us. It was a phenomenal event, again, at Oso Creek Campus. It, it surpassed everything that I was expecting. I was expecting great things, and it was even greater. The turnout, the, the, the student panel, the quality of the service from our Culinary Arts produced a beautiful meal for these individuals, and, and I didn't get to eat, though, I just, I regret that, that point, because I was too busy. But anyway, it was a phenomenal turnout of, of support for, for the college and, and our relationships. And, you know, the, the team that came forth and put this together worked so hard, so hard. And I'd like for Dr. Leonard Rivera and Mr. Condado Garcia to be, they were the tips of the spears, because these are the rock stars at this, at this, at this event. They were the ones that, what people were coming up to and acknowledging and thanking for, for putting this together. Of course, those are longtime, deep relationships, and Leonard, I just, I can't thank you enough again. Condado, Mr. Condado Garcia, retired superintendent from West Oso ISD, he's been helping, been working with our team. I just want to thank you all for those efforts. The, the thing that, that struck me at the end of it was that both of them were saying, "Well, this is the first one. Get ready for the next one." We hadn't even finished the first one, and they were already getting fired up about it. But it was such a phenomenal turnout. We just, there are great things coming, and I, and I can't wait to share more of these gentlemen's work with you all in the future. That concludes my report.
Any questions for Dr. Eskamia? Thank you, Dr. Eskamia. Moving on to Regents' Report, Ms. Louis Abir.
Thank you. You'll hear more about our annual ACCT Conference in a little bit from those who were able to attend, but on behalf of the Regents, I wanted to congratulate Chair Scott on being elected as Western Regional Chair for ACCT, which is a wonderful honor, obviously, not just to recognize her contributions, but to also recognize the importance of Delmar College. And Carol, just thank you so much for all of the work you do on behalf of the college. Many of you know Carol also has been very active at the state level, and more recently at the national level, and it really, it really helps ensure that we are at the table, that we know what's going on, that we're part of the trends, that we can influence the future of community colleges. And just congratulations, and thank you so much for your willingness to serve in an additional volunteer capacity.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it. It's kind of one of those things where you have to be careful showing up, because sometimes you're the last, last man standing. I think I was the last man standing on this one, but thank you very much. We would like to talk about our ACCT Congress. We had several Regents who were in attendance, so I want to offer the opportunity for Regents to share some thoughts in maybe a session or two. We've got some, we've got a specific presentation in a minute on, on another important ACCT committee, but wanted to start with Dr. Adami and see if he has any thoughts to share on the ACCT Conference.
You know, these conferences are very important. Specifically with this one, it touched a lot on AI's presence in the academic world, and how's it going to affect academia with the students, as well as with the professors and the instructors? Are they using it for, for, for the good? Are, you know, where, where do we actually stand? So we had a, an opportunity to, to attend several, several, I call it clinics, because that's what they are, on, on AI and the representation. And they talked about, you know, the good it could do for education. They develop, or they're working on software that will determine if there was plagiarism through AI. So we, we can see the, the aspects of it, how it can hinder, but also help the student, you know? So it gave you a good insight as to what's going on with AI. I've always been fascinated with it. We use it in our daily lives, you know, every day, you know, with Siri and Alexa, and then so that's been going on for years already. So it's developed to a point where, you know, it's easy to use. If it's prompted the right way, you could get any information you want. So I really learned a lot at this conference.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Adami.
Sorry. You're fine. I have a cold, sorry. So, one of the things I really focused on when I was up in Seattle was looking at different certificate programs that they're offering. One of the sessions I went to was for social work, and, and, but these are for people who are already working for the government, or already working for nonprofits, and how the social work is really working with the homeless populations in their communities. If you've never been to Washington State, homelessness is a huge problem in their, in their state, and how they're, and how they're trying to handle that. And it was interesting to see that a lot of these community colleges, just like us, are working really in depth with their communities, looking at some of their issues that they're having, and how community colleges can play a role in tackling those problems, to help educate and upscale their, their members. Another program that we went to was Head Start, looking at daycare and how that is helping with their populations and their, especially with their single moms. We have, a lot of our, a lot of our, our students are single parents, and daycare, there's a daycare crisis. It's very expensive to provide daycare for children, and sometimes, you know, that is a huge barrier to students finishing, entering, and continuing with their education. So it was interesting how Head Start found a home on their campuses, and how that is helping our students continue with their education. So those were the things that I focused on most.
Thank you, Dr. Turner. Regent Kelly.
I think we're going to hear a lot about AI. That was definitely a focus, and I can tell you that's also a focus at continuing legal education seminars. And I, I think one of the things that they did well here was to try to demystify and assuage our concerns about what AI is doing. I think it was particularly telling, one of the speakers pointed out that there was similar anxiety when calculators were introduced. People are never going to be able to do math again. And then Google, you're not going to know how to do research because of Google. But then also, they demonstrated and gave us examples of how AI is going to assist in the administration of colleges. And yes, as the software develops, we'll be able to identify plagiarism and that sort of thing. So it's coming. It's here. And so I thought it was appropriate that so much time was spent on it in Seattle.
Thank you, Regent Kelly. Regent Garza.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, absolutely. My colleagues were talking about basically the presence and the future involvement of AI as a tool for students, and the, and one of the comments made by, in one of the workshops was either faculty and staff are going to lead the conversation and lead the, the direction and how we use this tool, or the students are going to lead the staff and how we use these tools. So we, my, my belief is that we have to invest highly in technology in order to be able to keep our leadership role. We've done a great job as an institution. Everybody acknowledges that Delmar College is, is a leader in terms of workplace credentials, work, workplace, workforce preparation, but you can't rest on our laurels. We've got to be able to make sure we get in front of it. I was pleasantly surprised when I got back that Dr. Eskamia presented a paper that our staff, our IT group had put together, related to some of the stuff that, some of the work they've already done related to AI. And so again, I think we're in a good position, but we can't rest on our laurels. We have to keep moving forward. There was a lot of other areas of conversation. I do feel comfortable that, that we're doing a lot of things right. You don't learn just in the clinics. You also learn it when you go to the luncheons. We had a keynote speaker or panel that was from Central Ohio, where they're going to be building a huge Intel manufacturing facility for some of our microcomputing chips. And the way that they won the, the bid for Intel's great manufacturing facility down there was that they, their EDC group, their people in the state, Central Ohio, partnered with their community colleges and, and with their power groups, or power generation groups, to be able to, to, to take care of and move, remove obstacles in how they were going to train their workforce, how they were going to be able to get the incentives they needed to get from their state and the federal government to be able to locate there, and to make sure that they were going to have the power available so that they could actually be able to make it a reality. So again, those are things that we're doing here in Corpus Christi. We've been doing them for quite a while now, and, and for that, I'm, I'm highly proud. But we've got, we've got a lot of work to do, but we've got all the makings of, of being able to continue to, to protect our lead. Thank you.
Thank you, Regent Garza. Dr. Babaly, I'm going to end with you so that you can talk about the conference and then go straight into your partnership as well. So if you'll indulge me, I'm going to just do, make a couple of follow-up comments. I wanted to call to folks' attention that as part of the awards program, there is a nice published book that lists all of the, the members, and so we had a page on our faculty nominee, Dr. Stone, from the, as the Western Region winner. And then thank you to College Relations for helping us put together a congratulatory ad in that book as well. So I've got a copy of that, if anybody would like to have an extra copy of it. Dr. Stone was a full registrant, and so he got one already, but we do have a couple extra copies if anybody would like one. Wanted to talk a little bit about what's happening at the national level related to House Bill 8, and the performance-based funding that we have, we're embarking on in Texas. That's getting a lot of attention, and so there's actually now a special study that's being done by ACCT, looking at, at the impact and what's happening in Texas, as well as what's happening in Iowa around some dual credit funding there. So they're beginning to really dig deep and study these new funding models across the nation, and one of those examples is going to be Texas and what's happening here. So the data-informed governance, that our state association, that the, the workshops and presentations on data-informed governance and how that works to inform Regents and trustees about performance-based funding is getting replicated at the national level as well. So I think it's really important to understand that what happens in Texas doesn't stay in Texas. Good and bad, maybe, but, but, but there are, there are opportunities to spread our knowledge base in what we've been doing across the nation as well. So look forward to seeing that evolve. There is a, a new Center for Policy and Practice under ACCT that is doing a lot of this work. And with that segue, I'm going to pass it over to Dr. Babaly, because one of the other initiatives in the Center for Policy and Praxis is this Indian and US Workforce Partnership Workshop that Dr. Babaly is participating in. And with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So my, just a couple of comments on the, the ACCT Conference itself. AI stood out as a dominant topic there, and also dual credit enrollment. I think several sessions addressed that, and I think that's a really important thing. We need to recognize that Delmar College is ahead of many community colleges in the country in that initiative and, and commitment to improve dual credit enrollment. So I both applaud, at the same time, keep on doing what we do really in that area to help our students come up through the line as such, and I know all the Regents here are dedicated to that, too. And AI is, is a, again, you know, we, we, we went through a major kind of crash course, actually, I think, on AI, how the adoption of AI by, by colleges is taking time, but we need to move quickly and make sure that we are ahead of the curve and do that as such. And on, on the sideline, though, I want to note that And on the sideline, though, I want to note that Texas community colleges are very well represented at the national level. And I'm very, very proud to say several sessions where they may be absent, actually. But our Chair, Carol Scott, our President, Marcus Eskamia, and our Legal Counsel, Augie, are really very much admired, respected, and sought out for their suggestions and initiatives. And I was very proud to be a witness to that, you know, that Delmar College, when they see my name tag, they go, oh, Delmar College. I mean, it's like, yeah, dude, yeah, you know? So I'm really proud to be associated with this college. Definitely, you know, made me proud because that was my first major ACCT Leadership Conference Congress. So it really made me applaud our leadership here as such. So moving to this initiative, ACCT has, it's heartwarming to me on several levels, okay? Why India and United States, for the first time, met together as two largest democracies in the world, working democracies in the world, to combine their expertise, their commitment to actually come to the level of community colleges, to lift up the workforce of the next decade or two or three decades. They were looking at the future of workforce and needs of the industries as they move very quickly at an exponential speed, especially propelled by AI and other technological instruments that are emerging. And what kind of a student are we looking at, at the community college level? And what kind of needs that we have to address? So for the first time, I think I've circulated to our Regents, this is the workforce which we met, the combination of academic leaders, Regents, I guess I'm probably the only Regent, I think, in these task force. And it's, you know, that Delmar College is represented at a national and global level of developments in this area. I think that makes me very proud to represent our college. And so we met in Seattle the first time, representatives of the governments from India and the United States and the industries from both countries. And there's a major corporation, global corporation in IT called Cognizant. I don't know how many of you have heard about Cognizant. Cognizant is, it's literally supporting this initiative of India and US coming together for this as such. So we started out with, ACCT actually already selected two colleges in the United States, and they wanted my opinion, my suggestions, what are the other two colleges in India that could be partnered together? We already selected one, but we are also looking for another one in India. And as we work that partnership in, we're going to expand into embracing and bringing in other colleges as we develop this. So, but interestingly, we recognized some areas of future employment needs that we need to make a note and see how we can fit into Delmar College developments of the future. Now, the areas, one of the, I mean, some of the areas which I wanted to point out, data analytics and cybersecurity. That is one of the top areas that for the next 10, 20 years, they're looking at community colleges to produce students in that area, okay? Data analytics, cybersecurity. Second is global health and food security. These are, actually, we came up with these areas after long, two-day discussions, actually, in Seattle. Long sessions, but very productive. So global health and food security were identified. Entrepreneurship and how we teach that at the community college level and in what industries, what sort of entrepreneurship. And the fourth area is automated manufacturing, the fourth area. And then the fifth area is kind of interesting, lifestyle areas of fashion design and things like that, okay? And so we have a good balance of not just technological, scientific, industry needs, but also fine arts, liberal arts issues as such. So the fundamental skills that we identified, what we need in a community college student coming out, is applied mathematics, interestingly. Critical thinking skills, of course, we have that. Problem solving, ability to contribute to diverse teams, teamwork in a diverse environment, multilingual, multicultural, multi-religious. These are all, we're talking about global needs and things which are needed at a global level as such. So having identified that, then we also agreed that the next summer in Washington DC, this group will reconvene to crystallize and actually put instruments of, tools, how to make this partnership work. And as a, kind of just to see how this team is exposed to community college needs, we went on a tour. They took us on a tour to South Seattle Community College. And you won't believe it, it just blew our minds. We saw a 3D printing of a house, a complete house being constructed. A full house was constructed through 3D printing, right in front of our eyes. And it took about 1 hour 15 minutes for a full house to be constructed and ready for occupancy. And not a residue, not an iota of anything that has to be cleaned up and thrown out in garbage, clean. There was nothing to be taken out. And this is like, it had tile work on it, it had flooring with designs. I mean, just amazing how, and so when I approached it and said, you guys are doing this here in community college level? Actually, they said, Texas is actually ahead of us. And I said, really? Well, Austin has already constructed 350 houses in 3D printing and sold in the market. So I think those kind of skills, they're just looking at every aspect, every human dimension, every technological aspect of how you protect the environment, how you deal with issues of future needs that the curriculum and our certification programs and credentialing have to be thought about in a new and innovative ways for the future. So stay tuned, because I will be representing you in this endeavor. And as it develops, I will be reporting to Madam Chair and Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Babaly, and thank you for your willingness to serve on that important workshop partnership that is being established. Thank you all for those reports and for your continued devotion to continued learning as Regents and trustees. We appreciate that. We're going to move on to our staff reports. And as I said earlier, we're going to start with the City of Corpus Christi announcement by the Delmar College Foundation, an announcement of a City of Corpus Christi Award. And so we're going to invite Matthew Busby to come up, please.
Let's see, who's controlling this? There we go.
I know, I got you out of order. I apologize.
No, that's okay. Okay, perfect. So I have my timer, you know, just to make sure I can move through quickly. But first off, I wanted to recognize in the audience Sandra Alvarez is the President of our foundation, the Delmar College Foundation Board, and she's representing that board today. So the first thing is, is an exciting $1.9 million grant by the City of Corpus Christi, if we can, there we go. And for, let me go back one time, for the Enhanced Skills Training for High-Demand Careers. That's the title of this grant, and it's 31 pages. And I'm not going to go through 31 pages. I think they're great. If you'd like to see it, you know, Dr. Eskamia can share that with you. But I want to, in a very quick amount of time, share some highlights. There is partnership, and then there's partnership. And I talked to a plant manager years ago who became a great friend. I said, Sergio, you know, tell me about partnerships. And he said, usually partnership is this, right? It's just handout. And usually it's the community college or the fundraisers, which I'm a professional fundraiser with the handout, right? And so this is totally not that sort of partnership. And I want to point out the six different elements of partners. The first is CCRDC, the Type AB Board, City of Corpus Christi, Delmar College. And that's three, you know, three words with a lot packed into it, the foundation, and then also our local employers. And I forgot to put that on there. I don't want to list names because then we're going to exclude somebody. But we've received funding similar to this multiple times in years past. And so this is the most recent iteration. And so just in a nutshell, I'll kind of share a little bit of how this works. So the foundation takes the lead in terms of this as a philanthropic opportunity to bring together all the partners and align between mission, purpose, and goals. And so we, of course, have our foundation board, and there's four people in particular that really were instrumental in this, Sandra being one of those, Lance Brown, Rosendo Cruz, and Ken Trevino. We go first internally to Delmar College Deans, and this year we went to Vice President, Dr. John Hockum, Deans Suther, Merrill, and Chorus, and of course, working closely with Dr. Eskamia and Lenora, to ascertain some relevant needs at the college that we don't have money for, quite frankly, right? And that's what we did. So that takes a lot of work, a lot of efforts. And then we go through the flow, which is the CCRDC Board we present, foundation and the college present a proposal, and they say, does this work, right? And we had a unanimous vote of support, a unanimous vote by CCRDC said absolutely. First off, they couldn't stop talking about wonderful things with Delmar College, the foundation, and this particular proposal. It then moves to Type AB Board for the consideration with two different readings, both of those readings with the support and advocacy. I can't advocate, I can share information. And we did a lot of background work. That's where our foundation board, Ken Trevino, Lance, Rosendo Cruz, these particular four members of the Delmar College Foundation Board were advocates in ways that staff were not able to do. Type AB Board unanimous, absolutely, they moved it straight up to city council. And in an election year, I just remind you of that, right? Twice, city council unanimously didn't even pause in presenting it for the approval and unanimous consent to move this forward. And so this took a lot of work by a lot of people, but here we are today. And I had a kickoff meeting, thank you, Raul, for the idea, where we rallied internally, and we're going to come through and expend these funds very quickly to the benefit of the program. So promoting economic growth through education, skilled workforce development is the primary mission of Type AB Board, and thus the selection of these five existing programs at Delmar College, which is where we came up with Enhanced Skills Training for High-Demand Career Pathways. These are five existing programs that address the critical workforce needs and shortages in Corpus Christi. These are those five programs. So just at 1.9 million, I averaged that by like $100,000. And these are those five programs in no particular order. But I point your attention to industrial instrumentation. That was the largest of the programs in terms of the ask. All of these five programs, 100% go to purchasing state-of-the-art equipment and technology to sustain and increase the output, the number of graduates and the quality of graduates of these programs, all right? So next, and I'm not going to read each one of these, but I want to point out that these five programs align with the whole purpose of Type A, Type B in the City of Corpus Christi, focusing on local industry and what they produce. They produce graduates, but most importantly, and I told this to the CCRDC Board this morning, 8 o'clock breakfast, where we had a round table, it happens every month, a lot of folks go already. And I said, you know, there's three things we hear for economics. The first is water, electric, and talent pipeline. That's the last one of what I help with, with Delmar College, the talent pipeline. These five programs produce anywhere from graduates making $53,000 to $124,000. These are great jobs here locally that Delmar College is preparing people for. These are just a short list of partners, and they're not duplicated, and there's plenty of folks not on this list who are going to hire these graduates of these five programs that are already committed with program advisory boards and foundation donations, and they're going to be hiring our graduates. So the strategic importance for this, in terms of when our presentation for CCRDC Type AB Board in the city, is that it's in a total alignment with our mission, to provide high-quality education and workforce preparation. Now remembering for those folks who are watching, this is in particular, this is workforce. That's what Type AB Board, so Delmar is broader than just workforce, right? But this is in particular for that, to develop that pipeline and that steady supply of skilled workers. We are not alone as a community, and you can see from San Antonio, Houston, Austin, Dallas, we do similar things at the community colleges there and the EDCs. So here's the recap. It's a $1.9 million grant, the foundation's the fiduciary agent. We're going to be partnering with all of our deans, program staff, the grants office, Raul's team, to expend these funds expediently, because we look forward, I don't want to set a timeframe, but nine to 12 months, to go ahead and have a physical presence kickoff, invite our investors from the city to come onsite to Windward Campus and to look at these programs and what that $1.9 million is doing. But it reinforces these five existing programs. And ultimately, the baseline is we have a talent shortage and talent opportunity, and that's what these five programs are going to do. The very last thing is that 1,400 students were majoring in these five programs during spring of 2024. Our goal is to increase the number of the students enrolled and those students who are graduating, but then more than that, and different than that, to reduce the onboarding time, which is where when we partnered up with our foundation board and our local employers, they said, look, you've got a great program, because we have very candid conversations. But sometimes when we hire from this program, there's a little more onboarding that needs to take place. How do we mitigate that? Well, we get, you know, $700,000 in funding to enhance that program's equipment and technology, such as industrial instrumentation, and thus, we're going to improve a higher quality graduate that has a shorter onboarding for our local employers, right? So that's an element for this as well. With that, that concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Don't have a question, Matthew, but I want to say thank you. The strategic work that you and the foundation board provide in partnership, obviously, with the college and the different programs is so important because you have the ability to bring in these external dollars in all sorts of ways. So just wanted to thank you. And Sandra, please give our thanks to your board for the important work that y'all do. Do we have questions from any of the board members? Thanks for bringing this to us, Matthew. And thank you for being here, Sandra.
Thank you.
All right, we will go back to our strategic plan update and ask Dr. Natalie Villarreal to come forward. Any opening comments?
Good afternoon, Dr. Eskamia, Madam Chair. There we go. Good afternoon, Dr. Eskamia, Madam Chair and Board. Today, I'd like to update you on the ongoing work that has been happening at the college with the new strategic plan charting the Viking Way. Now, before I begin, I have to note, everything that you've heard so far today, when you look at your board agenda, ties directly that's happening with the plan. So I'm very proud of the team of the college that's put this together. And so it's almost like a little checklist as you go through your board packet. You know, examples include the work being done by Ms. Letitia Wilson in advising initiatives, Ms. Janet Camps in e-learning, Mr. Conrad Garcia, our new superintendent in residence here at the college, helping Dr. Divetta with dual enrollment. All of these are just huge parts of the initiatives that are happening, and you're getting to hear about all the operational pieces. So again, very exciting work. Now, in June, you approved the strategic plan with three guiding stars, and that was to communicate, to elevate, and to cultivate. And along with those three guiding stars, you also approved the goals and the strategies, which then have given us the ability to move forward and really start looking at the key performance metrics, excuse me, that really establish the plan, what we measure, right? So the KPI is the data used to indicate the progress. Are we making progress within the plan? So as we move forward, I would ask you that you keep in mind that many of our new measurements are very new. We've never measured communication necessarily here at the We've never measured communication necessarily here at the college at this grand of a level or cultivation of culture. And so with our student success in terms of our data regarding KPI measurements with House Bill 8 and how we're doing within our student completion, that's a little easier to look at. And so there's some metrics that we're having to create baselines for. And then there's some metrics that we're having to just now really able to get a KPI on because House Bill 8 metrics have changed for fiscal year '25. Does anybody have any questions before we move on? So under the first guiding star, communicate, these KPIs have several tools that we are using to obtain really solid data, data-driven, right? You keep hearing that, and you'll see that everything we do from here on out has to do with data that is very solid. It's something that is reputable, local, state, nationally, and we take pride in. So for the faculty-staff satisfaction with communications, you'll see that's going to come from an internal survey that's being put out by college relations. Now, you'll see the larger percentage here on this first KPI, for example, increasing by 70%. Those large percentages that you see in the key performance indicators, those really show you the work that we have to do to make those strides. We've looked at that data, and we've noted, yay, 30% of our faculty and staff really think that we're communicating well, but we want to do so much better than that. So in working with Jeff Olson, we've talked about how high do we want to go? In five years, we want to get to 70%. We also are using the Community College Survey of Student Engagement, and you might have heard of this as the CSE. Now, this was started in UT Austin in 2001, and it is research that is solely focused on the community college student. And so increased participation in the college-wide sponsor activities for faculty and staff and the student participation in community-based projects are going to be based off of the CSE data. However, the challenge with that KPI is that we usually don't administer that until the spring. And we haven't done the CSE for faculty and staff in many years. So again, these are different areas that we're going to continue to work on that we'll report back to you when we have those established KPIs. If you look at increasing the usage of student resources, which is very important work here at the college, Dr. Turner, you mentioned the work that you saw, that you heard about at ACCT. It's something that the Student Affairs Office really takes to heart here and has been working hard for many years. So for an order us to measure student resources and how many of our students are using those resources, we're focusing on three areas, Baldur's Market, our campus counseling center, and then our Viking Career Closet. Now, within the Strategic Marketing Plan by College Relations, and I believe this was presented to you, I believe, in May at the regular board meeting, this is going to help establish baselines with the community goals, which are really involved around increasing community events on campus and awareness. And a great example of that this week was the superintendents and the ISDs coming to campus. And we had, was it over 100 individuals? Thank you, Dr. D'Vetta. Does anybody have any questions about the KPIs, the ones that still need to be established, and what we're looking at under communicate? So next year, once the KPIs are completely established and we have some data that we're able to really look at, these are the type of charts and information that you'll be receiving. You'll get an example of the data source, the baseline that we're using, which is going to be 2023 and 2024 for most of our data, and it's going to track every year. It'll give you the year, the target at the end of the year and the data source. The guiding star for Elevate focuses on our student and our college's resources. So for the key performance indicators here, we are using the data and the metrics that have been established by the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board and our House Bill 8 initiative. And right now, we're really looking at fiscal year 2025 and already '26 and '27. We're also using internal data by our Institutional Research Office, which is really helping us drive these numbers. So if you take a look at some of these numbers, you know, increasing student completion by 5%. Students completing 15 semester credit hours in enrollment by 3%. It may not seem as if we're trying to make significant strides. However, these KPIs, because they are tied to student performance and funding, these strategies are taking a little bit longer to talk out, to organize, and then to come up with those operational measures that are moving these strategies forward. So the teams are working extremely hard right now, putting a lot of time into these strategies, but it's going to take a couple of years for us to really be able to start moving the needle. But you will start receiving that information on a yearly basis. And I'll give you an example. Our curriculum committee, that is structured, our credit curriculum committee is structured throughout the academic year. So every month, a different group, a different area in the college is going to curriculum committee to discuss the changes in their programming and curriculum for our students. Dr. Eskamia, did you? No, okay. So again, even though these numbers may seem small, these incremental changes over the years really are ensuring that we're being very strong, but we're being solid and very consistent in terms of what we're specifically doing for our students' completion rates and success. And then our last guiding star is cultivate, which again, these measures are going to be more internal. We're using the College Relations Survey and also the Strategic Enrollment Management Plan, which was also reported to you in May. And then you're going to hear a comprehensive enrollment update here in just a bit. But those are really the data measures that we're going to be using to look at our faculty and staff's perception of Delmar College as a favorable workplace. Again, 30%, 40% sounds really great, but wouldn't it be great if we reached for 100%? We don't know if we're going to get there, but we're going to try. Measuring the number of faculty who attend advisory training. So under our advising initiatives office with Ms. Letitia Wilson, the number of faculty and staff who've attended advisory trainings has been consistently going up every year. And so in fact, last year, they counted over 300 faculty and staff who came in and took trainings. So although that number is wonderful, and we're really excited about that, we're going to be working with Letitia to ensure that that continues to grow exponentially. Because as you have heard in the strategic plan, advising is crucial right now in getting our students to where they need to be. Now, in the next presentation regarding enrollment, you're going to hear about fall credit and continuing education, how they're up by 5% headcount and 2.8, respectively, from last year. So again, we really want to strive to keep that enrollment as a steady pattern for right now. We know that we're going to go above and beyond. When y'all talk about the exciting things that are happening in dual enrollment, Dr. Bobbely, that is really just the beginning. And so we just want to make sure that all of the work that we're doing every day operationally, we can show consistent gains throughout the year, so you can see what's happening strategically. So I'm going to leave you with all of the data sources that we have used in the past few months. We've looked extensively at everything from our internal data, such as our Quality Enhancement Plan, our advising initiatives. These are things that have been in place for years. You've heard about them off and on. We didn't forget about them. Coming into 2024, we were ensuring that they were going to, we're going to continue looking at that, as well as the new things like our Strategic Enrollment Management Plan, our new marketing plan in House Bill 8. Does anybody have any questions regarding the KPIs?
So I have a question about kind of process going forward. So I really appreciate giving us the indication of what data points you're looking at as we move forward. What can we expect to see and what cadence can we expect to see progress? What kind of dashboards can we see, and when can we see them in terms of progress towards these goals?
So right now, with House Bill 8, our Institutional Research Office has developed some really amazing House Bill 8 dashboards of data. And so we are already looking at that in terms of our student success. Now regarding the communication and cultivation piece, that is going to take about a year and a half to really start seeing some changes. You know, there's some new things that College Relations is doing every month to really increase communication externally, internally with our students. So that's going to take about a year and a half. And then also with cultivation, starting things like our Viking Care Initiative, the Viking Way. That is being established as we speak, and also going to take some time. But let's say for November of next year, Institutional Research said we will be able to have solid data that we can report in terms of our student success outcomes. And then we'll also be able to update you on all the strategies and operational pieces that are happening as well.
Okay, so the cadence is annually, or is the cadence a couple of times a year?
No, it'll be at least each long semester, at least twice, if not three times, depending on what's happening in the summer. But just to touch bases, to show progress along the way, it's going to be actually, it'll be at least two years of development. And I think, so over the next couple of years, you can expect at least once a semester for us to come back here to answer the question.
Okay. Other questions, comments on what we heard today? Regent Kelly?
Yeah, I'm impressed with all the work you've done, and I do appreciate that there is some restraint on student tuition included in there. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. That is something that has continued from our other strategic plans, so we're working with the business office to ensure that that's a priority.
Thank you.
One extra piece. We talked about the adjustments on the credit side for HBA. Can you just give a little commercial on what's going on, on the work that's being, that we're undertaking as we speak? I know we have staff probably working on it there at her seat over there, Dr. PBD, about the CE changes. Can you just talk to the regents a little bit about the LCLCs, LCICs, and the OSAs?
ICLCs, I got you. Okay.
Alphabet soup, sorry.
So when we first embarked on the House Bill 8 metrics, we reported to you that there were 17 metrics, everything from a certificate to an Occupational Skills Award on the credit side, on the continuing education side. Then we went to the associate's degrees and now the bachelor's degrees, right? So all of those encompass the 17 metrics. So we basically have two areas, right? The credit side is really working every month, looking at their programs, looking at the coursework, to see what is necessary to continue moving forward, to really capitalize on House Bill 8. But then also, under Dr. D'Vetta, the continuing education and the corporate services side is in turn trying to structure all of their courses and programming to ensure that we receive the most amount of appropriation that we can. Things that are already happening here at the college, they just now have to be structured so that we can get an appropriation off of the course.
And currently, we're working on 44 of those ICLCs and OSAs. And we're working to reconfigure those so that it fits the demands of the state by way of a number of classroom hours and so forth, so that we can be refunded for. And so those will go into place next spring, this coming spring.
Yes.
Am I missing something, Dr. PBD? She's a compliance person in charge. Okay, so I got that thumbs up. So tons and tons of curricular shifts going on to position so that we can work in tandem with the state to achieve the outcomes of building a talent-strung Texas and the blueprint and so forth. It's a ton of work, and I can't thank faculty and staff enough for all the extra efforts that have gone on. We'll be submitting a big packet of 44 or so credentials to be submitted to Coordinating Board this Friday on the 15th, right, Dr. PBD? Okay.
It is a testament to see it on paper and then have to go through the detail on how it affects everything from the registrar's office, your transcripts, how you number a course, what a student is learning in that course, what is the name of the course, and the list goes on. And so both the credit and the CE side are working very hard on those ICLCs and Occupational Skills Awards to ensure that for at least 2025, we get the metrics that we are entitled to as long as we structure it correctly. Anything else, Dr. Eskamia? Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Villarreal. All right, now we will hear the new acronym, apparently, Dr. PBD. Dr. Patricia Benavides Dominguez. Dr. Halkum and Dr. Rivera will present our student enrollment update.
No problem.
Is that it? That's what it stands for? PBD stands for problem, okay?
No, no, no. PBD is just my initials. People don't like to say my name, they just say PBD. Anyway, been around since Dr. Figueroa was here. Anyway, good afternoon, Madam Chair, Dr. Eskamia and board of regents. Today, we will provide an update on student enrollment. In this report, we have incorporated some slides from the recent TAC meeting that provide a more statewide perspective on community college higher ed enrollment. I think everyone is pretty familiar with this slide. This slide communicates the reporting periods for academic credit courses and CE programs, ensuring that everyone understands the timeline for key dates for enrollment, reporting, and evaluation. Spring of, I mean, September 2024 began the credit courses, beginning in fall, and simultaneously, CE begins with quarter one, and by December, they are in quarter two. Today's report outlines the enrollment trends and highlights growth areas across student populations. Doctors Halkum and Rivera will provide an overview of the trends in their respective areas. Overall, our enrollment is trending upward, and this report provides an overview of our enrollment from two sides of the perspective, academic credit and CE, continuing education. Let me point out that the first bullet work in progress also refers to the work internally being done that Dr. Eskamia referred to earlier between continuing education, corporate services, instruction, and student services. We anticipate that it will take approximately two years to examine, tweak, and pivot to make the necessary changes regarding House Bill 8. This slide depicts the Fall '23 to Fall '24 enrollment across various categories of the institutions throughout the state. Community colleges and technical colleges have seen an uptick, reflecting the growing demand for training and certification programs, and Delmar College's data demonstrates this change. This slide shows Delmar College's upward positive academic credit enrollment trend and provides context by comparing to our large peer group. It emphasizes that students are returning to school, an important message in a post-COVID recovery scenario. Do I have any questions before I transition to Dr. Halkum?
Just a quick comment as you're going through. Regents, we're really asking that you read these headers and so forth. They're going to track. And as Dr. PBD said, there's two sides of the coin here that amount to one coin, right? There's the credit side, and there's going to be the CE side, and this is a change. We've been talking about this for several years, but this is it. It's upon us now. You were a year into this thing called HBA and all the impacts and ramifications. And so the nomenclature that you're going to see as part of this presentation is very, very purposeful. And the hopes are that it'll change our vocabulary together so that we're all singing off the same sheet, speaking the same language, whatever metaphor you want to use for that. But those words are not small matters, they're very important.
The last slide showed the headcount for the fall semesters, beginning in 2019 through 2024. This line graph includes the credit headcount for fall, spring, and all the summer sessions. So that's why you see numbers are a little bit different. You'll see that, you know, we took a little bit of a nosedive from 2019 through 2023 to '24, but we're on the upswing. And you'll see that one year changed between 2022, '23 to 2023, '24 of 0.87%. Note, this does not include that big increase from fall of '24. This is only through summer of '24. But we started seeing that upswing
But we started seeing that upswing at that time. Now, please note once again that a student is counted only one time regardless of the number of courses that they've enrolled in. So we are trending up. So I'm very anxious to see the data at the end of the '25 academic year, the 2024, '25 academic year. So here's our fall academic credit headcount, the bar graph. As it represents very much what Dr. Benavides Dominguez showed in the line graph, the fall numbers where we do see a 5.5% one-year change if you compare Fall '23 to Fall of '24. So this upward trend is occurring. It's a good indicator, as you've heard from Dr. Benavides Dominguez, of students returning or starting college. And once again, the student is only counted the one time. Let's look at enrollment for race and ethnicity for the fall semester headcount. And this is in 2023 and '24. Hispanic or Latino represent 71.5% of the credit enrollment in 2024. We see a slight shift, but no more than 0.4% in the percentage ratio of enrollment, whether it's an increase or decrease in each of the various groups. Increases in headcount, however, have occurred in the Black or African-American, Hispanic or Latino, international, and white groups as compared to 2023, with the largest headcount increase among the Hispanic or Latino group. Now let's look at student gender distribution. We see an increase in both the male and female enrollment when the fall headcount of 2023 is compared with fall of 2024. Male enrollment increased by 8.2% and female 3.6%. The percentage ratio of male enrollment has increased overall by the one percentage point, as you can see in the bar graph. Males make up 43% of the Fall 2024 enrollment and female 57%. Once again, all the data from the last four slides indicate that we do have a very positive trend and I see that trend continuing. Now let's take a look at continuing education and we'll have Dr. Rivera talk about the continuing education and dual credit. Once again, when we look at the numbers in the last few slides, one thing I did not note is that these numbers do include our dual credit students, not continuing education, but our dual credit students, okay? But he will talk, Dr. Rivera will talk more about the continuing education and dual credit in just a moment.
Thank you, Dr. Halcom, I appreciate that. This is very exciting times we're in right now, as Dr. Eskamia has noted before starting this presentation and as noted by Dr. Villarreal. On the continuing education side, we continue to see positive gains in our student headcounts. It's depicted here for you here with showing right, almost a 3% increase over numbers last year, a year difference of about 3% increase. So we continue to improve our headcounts. Headcounts translate into more students in seats, more contact hours being generated, although we're not in a contact hour model right now. But those contact hours translate into completions, outcomes. Those ICLCs that was spoken about before, the OSAs, the associate's degree certificate level program. So this is very positive news for our college that we continue to see this increase. As we look at the transition to House Bill 8, credit and continuing education combined contact hours, we again see the increase that I just mentioned. The increase year over last is about 6.74% increase. And so that's pretty significant again because again, we're showing here, demonstrating for you that there are more of these contact hours being generated. And again, that equates to more folks that are completing their programs of study. Again, again, it's going to be your ICLCs, your OSAs, occupational skills awards, your Level 1, Level 2 certificates, and associate degree programs. And so we realized an additional 119,000 contact hours over last year. In similar fashion, we have our transition to House Bill 8, credit and continuing education combined headcounts. As said before, we again see the increase here depicted at about 6% year over last, additional 715 students that were enrolled. And again, these are positive signs that are attributed to just the hard work from the entire college faculty and staff in terms of grants, in terms of innovative programs of study, in terms of creating and developing in-demand occupational programs of study, and also in terms of us really going into the ISD high school levels and really providing the students in the high school levels more programming efforts and opportunities. This is something that we all should be proud of. For the first time and probably for the duration of our dual enrollment programming here at Delmar College, we have acquired a new record. And that should actually be a record with the confetti coming out of there and things of that nature, because it's something that is a big deal, in my opinion. We have achieved this new record with servicing right shy of 3,100 students this Fall 2024. That's a lot of students servicing approximately over 50 school districts. And again, this cannot be achieved without our quality staff, faculty, and other leaders that are putting in efforts to make this a possibility, a reality. And so we continue to see these remarkable increases, historic increases. You see here that our 10-year increase is 128%, over 128% increase over 10 years ago. And then you look at our five-year increase, right shy of 20%. So again, this is just a sign of the times. That's courtesy of House Bill 8 and the Financial Aid for Swift Transfer being felt. That's also being felt by your generous offering for allowing all students the opportunity to take our classes as dual enrollment at no cost or no tuition to them. So.
Dr. Rivera, again, this is the credit side of the house, okay? Almost 3,100, just the credit side, stay tuned. Just had to say that.
Correct. Remarkable numbers. So thank you all so much for doing these great things. Dual enrollment seniors matriculating to Delmar College. And so this graphic depicts our hard work in attracting our students from the high school to Delmar College. So you see the trends here depicted there for you, 2021, 2022, all the way down to the Fall of 2024. And you see that we made, at least on the students earning a college degree or certificate by high school graduation, we've made strides year over last of 21% increasing those numbers. And you see that the students, if you look at the graphic and you follow it, they, at the very bottom on the '23, '24 graphic, we'll get you more numbers in June. That's why we put TBD. Those numbers will come out and by the coordinating board and such. But if you look at the other columns above or rows above that, you see that we tracked very well in getting students to matriculate to Delmar as well as earning a credential of value here at the college. So again, positive news for all the positive efforts that we'd be making here at the college.
Leonard, I have to jump in one more time. This slide right here, ladies and gentlemen, the Board of Regents and team out there, this is setting the stage for what is possible, for possible recruitments by our own faculty in the future. You know, these are dual credit students who are waiting in the wings in all different areas and so forth. This is setting the stage for our own faculty to reach down into our own ranks and recruit from within. It's a concept that I'm going to bring forward to a meeting with our transfer academic leadership in a very short few days, next week, I think, next week. And this is what we're going to be working from, or at least this is what I'm going to be working from. There are tons of students that we could be recruiting from within our own ranks. Someone who's over there taking a short-term certification may be absolutely interested in the British poets, but how do they know if they're not exposed to it and so forth? But matriculation from high school, from our dual credit ranks into our transfer programs and the CTE programs as well is going to be a great opportunity. And I'm going to begin that conversation next week.
Our next slide provides, because everyone wants to know what.
We have a question, Dr. Leonard.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So I was wondering, so the seniors that are in dual credit right now, do the counselors talk to them how to transfer into Delmar? How does that process go for seniors?
Absolutely, yes.
Are they already part of Delmar? Do they sign up for classes? I mean, what do they, who speaks to them about that next step?
Yeah, that's a great question. Actually, it's a two-pronged approach. We have outreach specialists that are out working at the school districts on campus. They work at each high school that we service, which is again, is over 50 high schools. And outreach specialist will go out there, especially for the seniors, go out there and make concerted focused efforts or visits to meet with these seniors to not only have the Applied Texas application completed, but also provide them the step-by-step process by which they can apply and be admitted into Delmar College, providing them also, as needed, advising and/or referencing them where they could get advising from if it's something that is very, very specialized. But we do have folks or staff that are on the ground at these schools that are providing this invaluable information. We do that for all students, whether they're seniors or whether they're sophomores or juniors. You know, we're providing them this advising. Advising is a key central component to making this program successful. It's why we've seen gains and we continue to see these great things, so.
What about the dual credit kids? Do they already have that step going forward?
Yeah, the dual credit students, we have a dual credit staff that are providing, again, coordinated efforts with our outreach staff to be able to have them apply and be admitted into the college. There's like anything else paperwork that has to be completed. There's parent meetings that are had. There are just a ton of informations, orientation sessions in the dual credit realm that allows the students to be more acclimated to the dual enrollment process. And then from there, we basically will handhold them all the way through that process so that they, from enrollment to the time they start taking classes, so they could be more acclimated to Canvas and their instructors. We even have instructors, when we have instructors come on site, the instructors typically come out and are Dr. Halcom's areas and will provide their orientation to students in person many times. And so again, we do as much as we can to get the students to be, again, to be more acclimated to the rigors of college studies. Because it is something that's much different from just taking high school coursework. They have to understand there's other responsibilities.
Leonard, Dr. Patricia chime in. She was going to, so there's another half of this question, I think she wants to answer.
So, you know, we work under Dean Gracie Martinez. She's in charge of all the outreach and enrollment specialists. We work in tandem with Dr. Rivera's office on the dual credit. So the graduating seniors, whether they're dual credit participants or not, all get spoken with, talked to, advised. We do advising onsite for enrollment to Delmar. In addition to that, Joseph Reese, our Director of Financial Aid, through one of his outreach personnel members, also all year round goes out to all the schools and does FAFSA's for all the seniors.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions? And barring none, we'll go on to the dual enrollment transfer. These are data that are provided to where our students are more likely or have gone historically. And if you look at the graphic, you'll see that the numbers of students that do transfer to four-year institutions, and then you see at the top of the screen there, the top transfer institutions of study ranging from A&amp;M Corpus to Kingsville to Texas State University and all in between. And then you also see there that those students that may end up transferring to another community college, you see those colleges that they are going to, top community colleges that they transfer to, Blen, Lone Star, Coastal Maine College and such. So we do get, of course, our fair share of college students that come to Delmar. But then again, students will typically go off and they want to transfer elsewhere to be closer to maybe a university that they want to go to or such. So this is just some data for you to review and see where students do go after completing their dual enrollment experience. At this point, concludes our presentation. I think it's, I'll just kind of sum it up here with regards to the outstanding information that was provided by Dr. PBD, Dr. Halcom. And in review, you see that our trends are continuing to be positive. We are looking at dual headcount enrollment that's increasing by about 12.6% year over last. You see that our credit headcount increased of 5.5%. It's fall to fall, Fall '23 to Fall '24. And then our continuing education headcount being up by about 3% year over last. So we have a lot of great positive data to share with you today. If there are any other questions, I'm more than happy to answer, or Dr. Halcom, or Dr. PBD.
I don't have a question, but I have an observation. So our dual credit numbers increased significantly, 300-plus students fall to fall. And so without that increase in dual credit, we would have been flat in enrollment. If I look back, if I'm reading those numbers correct.
On the credit side.
On the credit side.
Yes, ma'am.
And so I'm curious as to how do we dig into, who did we lose between Fall of 2020 and Fall of 2024? Is it students who graduated who never went anywhere? Is it our students who dropped out and didn't come back? How do we continue to find those students that we lost? Or did the demographics shift that significantly? So I don't know the answer to that, but to me, there's still a big gap in the students that were here or were doing something with us in Fall of 2020 who are no longer in our orbit.
We, that's exactly what that meeting, Patricia, come on up. But that's exactly what that meeting is about next week. And we believe they're largely focused in on that traditional age student that's after the credit credentials and especially those in the transfer programs. And that's why we're meeting with the leadership next week for the transfer, all transfer programs. I'm meeting with them to lead that conversation. We're trying to better understand that. We know what the data shows nationally and we're trending with that as well as statewide. And that is your traditional age student. It was seeking your, I guess, your traditional path, if you will, at a community college type of credential. That number continues to soften. And so we, you know, we counter whichever way we can. And there's a shift because they are coming to us in bigger numbers at younger ages. And so because that's happening, I think it's gradually, that shift is changing the whole profile of our students. That's why our theories at this point, where we're going to test them and try to implement beyond those theories, is that we would be then shifting to recruit from those, as things shifted to the younger ages, the idea is then to recruit from those numbers and to bring them over to the traditional paths of the college as they get older. It's a shift and then there's just some national trends in the economy that we're just fighting. That's the best explanation we have at this point. We're trying to understand it. We are meeting to discuss things. We're drilling down into the classrooms because we have to hear from the faculty. They're the ones that feel it every day. Patricia, what were you going to say?
Also, you know, we have ongoing conversations amongst each other with our peers at A&amp;M Corpus, at A&amp;M Kingsville about transfer initiatives and, you know, with workforce solutions as well, the adults in the community. So it's an ongoing examination of digging in our data of, you know, where did they go? Where did we lose them? The qualitative part of that survey that we send to student. We are working with also looking at those stopouts and at reaching to those stopouts. We do that every semester.
The other thing too is as we transfer the number of students that do go on to other institutions. other institutions formally, I guess after completing, I would remind everybody that on any given year, we have 1,200 to 1,500 more students who transfer without officially transferring on top of that. And it's usually a number that's somewhere between 2,700 to 3,000 students total who leave and go to these institutions up there that you see on that top right box. And so, there's another bunch out there and, and we will be receiving credit for them ultimately to transfer as, as a result of HBA. But even, that's one of those loose ends that we have, we, we have yet to see come to fruition because we have, I don't even know if we've implemented the first round of those. I guess we have, I guess with, with that first year. We, we don't even have that data yet, though.
We're still analyzing the House Bill Eight data.
Yeah, because I don't think they've officially categorized that one into the transfer section. So lots of moving parts still. It's a.
I think it's important for our, to, to understand, for the Regents to understand the, the business model.
Yes.
And the long-term implications of this shift towards dual-credit students, which I fully support.
Sure.
But we have to understand what that means for the college and for facilities and, I mean, what, what are the long-term financial implications and business model around that? Because if we can't attract, if, if, if students are not coming back to us from a physical campus standpoint and we're shifting to, to dual-credit, then again, what does that mean for us in the long run? So how, how do we identify where, where those students are and if they are willing to come back with support or not? I don't know. But that's, that's a, those are big questions. I just didn't know. I just wanted to make sure I was reading the data correctly. Okay. Regent Loeb?
Well, I just wanted to clarify that, that President Eskamia, your, your theory is whereas 40 years ago, somebody would graduate high school, come here for a year or two and then transfer to a state university, what is happening now is they're coming here while they're still in high school and then immediately transferring?
Yeah.
To a large extent? I mean, we're capturing some of them, but, but that, that type of student has pivoted to, to doing the work in high school. Is that what you were saying?
Essentially.
Okay. I, I had a question. Graduates that re-enrolled in fall at DMC is a different number than the dual-credit who matriculated to here. What is the, so is this only kind of transfer students and then the other one is everybody including CE? I think the slide before this, if you look at it, there's, you know, about 10% of the dual-credit.
That slide?
Yeah. So students matriculating to DMC within one year of completing high school, that's a vastly different number. And I was wondering what the difference between that statistic and the next, the, the statistic on the next page was. Is this everybody that comes here for anything?
Students matriculating to DMC within one year of completing high school?
Right.
That's the, that's the dual-credit student.
Okay.
Currently enrolled dual-credit student.
Okay.
That we're tracking, that continues on.
Okay. So then the next page, if you go back to the next page, graduates that re-enrolled in fall at DMC. So why, why, why is there such a vast difference between those two numbers?
It could be those students that, that did complete a program of study, like they, they earned their certificate one and they're actually termed as a graduate, and then they come back to Delmar.
Okay.
And re-enroll for their certificate two or associate's degree programs.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so that, yeah, okay. So that's like they've, that, that's coming out of that, you know, 150 number that finished something while they're in high school. And so then, a percentage of those then come immediately after high school and say, okay, I'm going to go for my associates.
Yes.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Yes.
I mean, I, I just wanted to say, you know, I, I think it's great that the, the numbers are going up. I, I think for our workshop next week, that discussion of, I think this plays into our facilities plan a lot, is, you know, it, are, are we running three campuses or are we running 50 campuses? And I tend to lean more towards the latter and that we have to think about how, how we're planning out our facilities from that standpoint because it does look like, you know, if we want to engro, grow enrollment, it, it's very easy and we have partners who are willing to help us grow enrollment on, on facilities that they're primarily taken care of. But I think we need to figure out how we enhance that partnership. So I'm looking forward to next week.
Other comments or questions? Thank you all. Thank you. All right, we will move on to our pending business list, which provided to the board as part of your packet in December. We've got our annual tax abatement review and House Bill Eight update, our annual foundation review, and we will start talking about student charges for next fiscal year, but we'll start that discussion in December and make that decision in February. And then we do have professional contract review as well. In February, you can expect to hear from our internal auditors and again, have that discussion on our tuition and fee schedules, all of our student charges for both credit and CE programs. Any questions about our pending items? Seeing none, we'll move on to our consent agenda. We have three items on consent agenda, which are minutes and acceptance of investments and financial reports. Does anything need to be removed for separate consideration? Seeing none, is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Regent Loeb, second by Regent Kelly. Is there any discussion? Any public comment on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign, that motion passes. We'll now move on to our regular agenda, and Mr. Strabos is going to talk to us about possible annexation action around Clarkwood Estates.
Thank you, Regents and Presidents. The City of Corpus Christi has annexed property in accordance with the Texas Education Code, Section 130.066, automatic annexation of certain territory. So as the City of Corpus Christi annexes the property, then Delmar College can continue to annex property as well. And so, on October 15th, 2024, the City of Corpus Christi passed an ordinance annexing approximately 87.57 acres of land at the northwest corner of County Road 36 and Farm Market Road, 2292 Clarkwood Road, and the annexation of 1.254 acres of two, or 2,590 linear feet of sections of County Road 36 right-of-way that abuts the property's southern boundary, which will bring the properties into the territorial limits of Corpus Christi. The proposed annexation, annexation area is located within the Tulsa Midway Independent School District Service area, and recommend proceeding with this annexation.
Are there any questions for Mr. Strabos? Is there a motion to?
I'll make a motion. We annex this area?
Thank you, Mr. Kruel. Second by Dr. Babaly. Any discussion on the motion? Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign, that motion passes unanimously. All right, before we go to item number five, we are going to go into closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.071, consultation with legal counsel, and Texas Government Code 551.074 regarding personnel matters. The time is 2:38 PM. We will take a short break. If anybody needs to go to the restroom, but we'll meet in the closed session. All right, we have come back from closed session at 3:31 PM, and we're going back to item number five, which is discussion and possible action on the Nuasis County Appraisal District Board of Directors' votes. Mr. Rivera is going to give us a brief presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Regents, good afternoon. Are we on?
It's okay. I'm sorry.
Good afternoon. As, as been, as has been presented to you previously over the course of the last three or four meetings, you understand that there's a new process now by which some members of the Board of, of Directors for the Nuasis County Appraisal District Board get on that board. Five of the members of the new process are going to be elected by the taxing entities. As a taxing entity, you have been apportioned a block of votes, 595 to be exact, along with the other taxing entities. That's based on the percentage of past tax revenues. And so, your duty today is to consider how you wish to cast those 595 votes. You've been presented with the list of nominees that, that were previously put forth by all of the taxing entities. And so, you've got the list of names and any questions about that? I think we've covered that before, and so I turn it over to you. Of course, the recommendation is that you act on the ballot and approve the submission of the results in a resolution that will be signed once you take a vote to the appraisal district.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rivera. So we have 595 votes to cast, and we can cast them all for one individual, or we can divide them up as, as see fit. Mr. Loeb, do you have a, a motion to make?
I'm motion that we cast all 595 votes for our nominee, Deanna Hevelin.
Is there a second to that motion? Second by Mr. Kruel. Is there any discussion on that motion? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign, that motion passes unanimously. So we will inform Ms. Hevelin, as well as Delia and Augie will file the appropriate resolution paperwork with the Appraisal District Board. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Last item for discussion today is our calendar. We have a board retreat next Tuesday, and there's a couple of folks who are not going to be able to be in attendance. And so, I know Dr. Eskamia has had some, has and will have some separate conversations. That's what I say. I apologize. I'm looking at Thursday. It is Thursday. I apologize. My brain and mouth were not connected, imagine that. So it is on Thursday, the 21st, and then the Thanksgiving holidays the next week. On the 10th, we, December 10th, we will have our regular board day, and that will include at 1 PM, the first thing on the agenda will be the swearing-in or the oath of office to our newly re-elected unopposed candidates, Dr. Babaly, Mr. Garza, and Mr. Kelly. So you will, we will do an official swearing-in for your new term. Congratulations. And so that, that will happen at the first of the meeting again. So if you have folks that you, if you'd like to bring someone with you, invite them to lunch beforehand, please, and we'll do that first thing. Then we do have, the Coordinating Board has their annual Higher Edge Conference in December, along with season celebration and the commencement address, I mean, the commencement for our Delmar College graduates, and our commencement speaker is.
President of Delmar, Delmar College, no, sorry. Speaking of the brain not connecting to, is the President of Texas A&amp;M University Kingsville, Dr. Robert Vella. He will be there along with some team members, and we will be celebrating the Javelina Viking Connection.
Great. In January, we, at this time, do not have a regularly scheduled meeting. If a special-called meeting is needed, we will let you know. But at this point in time, we do not have a meeting scheduled. We will have the grand opening of the Memorial Classroom Building on the 21st, that's Tuesday the 21st. And I've asked Delia to get the date, or get the timeout to us as soon as possible to be on our calendar, and that's what we have for now.
One last, can we pull up a picture? There was a couple of pictures when I was making a presentation earlier that I just wanted to share with you all. This is, this is most of the group that was here at the Oso Creek Campus at the soup, Symposium. Dr. Rivera led us in, and those are just a bunch of, just beautiful people with just great admiration for education in general and especially the partnership between us and their institutions. I think there's one more picture, but it's, this one really said it all right there. I think it's, oh, there was a bunch of them. Oh, wow, there's a bunch of pictures. Whatever ones you can bring. Oh, you don't have to show my bags. Let's go. Let's keep going. But anyway.
There we go.
There we go. Those are the more fun ones right there. That's, that's the kind of energy we had there. There was so much fun, so much there, and thank you, team, for bringing those pics back. Oh, there's the student panel, and the kid in the middle, he's the one who sold me the picnic table. And, but those, those kids came from Flower Bluff, from, from right to left, Flower Bluff, West Oso, London, I think another West Oso kid, yeah, two West Oso kids, and then John Paul on the left. It was a wonderful, wonderful, just a wonderful day. Thank you for those opportunities, Regents, in indulging me there.
Thank you for sharing those with us. All right, with no further business, our meeting is adjourned at 3:37 PM.
Thank you.